Well, I'll give you a second to set up for minutes.
Thank you.
It's okay. Happens. I had a, I'm having a weird, weird morning myself.
Just didn't get out the door.
Neither. So don't worry about it.
There we go. Are you ready? Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, please, at nine thirty-two. Alan Gregory is joining us on Zoom, but I don't see him yet. There you are. Good morning, Alan. And Anne, what time do you need to leave? Don't you need to leave early today? Did you need to leave early today? At ten thirty. Okay, so we'll try and hustle through the business. Okay. Let's see, and I will open the meeting to public comment. We don't even have chairs for an audience today. Hi, Carol. Welcome. So seeing no public to comment, I will close public comment. And can we get an approval of the meeting minutes? For October, are there any changes?
There's a couple of changes Nancy had.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and hear those. Nancy?
Yeah, just that, and I, I already spoke with Elektra about this, but there was Hyawatha Gardens in the, mentioned under the El Colorado Lodge as paying their, half their mortgage, and it's not Hyawatha Gardens parking revenue that does that. So that was one correction. And the other was under the, under my report out for city council, it had said that there was no funding for the, pavilion for Hyawatha Gardens, and there is minimal funding under match, but that's it. There's not barely enough to start anything even designed with that. So those were the two corrections that I had.
Okay, thank you. And Darlene?
Yeah, number three, under the El Colorado Lodge, where it says that renovations are properly permitted, pursuant to Elektra's research, I think it should say something different that permits are not needed or something like that.
Okay.
And then one more on the bus stops and seating, it's not Land Row, it's Land R A O. That's her last name, R A O. I mean, R O A.
Which, which one is that under?
It's new business, number five. Her name is Lan R O A.
R O A?
Yeah, Lan Row. Oh, and I have one more.
Go ahead.
On the gateway mural, you say it will be, in quotes, "welcome to Manitou." Should it be welcome to Manitou Springs?
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
And it's Lan R A O.
Oh, it's R A O? Oh. Dyslexic.
R, R A O? That's correct. Okay, so we were, okay. Okay, Lan Row.
L A N, yeah, Lan Row, yeah. And then you were gonna check into the parking ratio for El Colorado, and that's just not in here, but.
Yeah, okay, I'll make sure that gets done.
Well, okay, is there a motion to approve the November minutes with changes and corrections? Thank you, Barb. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Darlene. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alan?
I wasn't here.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. Okay, appreciate that. I'm like, are you protesting something in there?
You can vote.
Yeah. Very good. Well, the motion carries.
No, we stopped voting.
Following procedure. Okay, very good. To financial report, Anne.
So we do finally have August through October, and I'll just look at October. We have seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in the bank. So we are spending that down. I think at some point in the November discussion with council, and I think you were just looking at total revenue, that you had said something above the million. And so they may have a slight misunderstanding, but we've been about eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand, and we're going down. So seven sixty-seven. You can look at the expenditures compared to annual budget, and clearly we're way under what we appropriated. But I'd be happy to answer questions.
Anne, do we have anything outstanding? For November of any substance?
I'm waiting. Apparently, we're gonna spend some money on the, the sculpture, the Spirit of Manitou before the end of the year. And it's pretty important because it's not budgeted in to get that to me so I can get it booked in twenty twenty-five.
Yet this year.
If at all possible. And if not, then we'll just exceed that line item in the twenty-six budget, but. So that's the only thing I know of that's kind of outstanding.
I know that Crane is trying to get that check out in, like now, but they haven't done the final choice on the artist.
Okay.
So the, because it's still in public comment.
Okay.
So.
That's the, the third. It's tomorrow, I believe.
Oh, good.
When the jury's meeting.
I'll follow up with Audrey on all of that.
Has the, have the lights been paid for already? I think you sent that out already.
The lights?
Yeah.
Yeah, we pay, we pay for those.
August. In August, that's right.
They put them up in, like, July, so they do.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Maybe.
My question. Then, Anne, are we going to adjust the budget to reflect that expenditure? You said it wasn't included in the.
Well, if we don't get the Spirit of Manitou to, that we expected the partial cost in twenty twenty-five, it will slide into twenty twenty-six. As you can see, we never approached the total appropriation. So a line item can go over, it doesn't matter. The only thing that matters is if we go over the total.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so I wouldn't have adjusted twenty-six if that happens.
As yet.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Anne? Okay. So we need a motion to approve, I believe it's August, no, so, yeah, August, September, and October. Financials.
Yes.
Motion by Barb, is there a second? Alan, thank you, Alan. Any further discussion?
Alan Gregory or Alan?
Alan Gregory, thank you. Alan, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, let's see. Okay, moving along, onto old business. And the Paragon update.
Yeah, so the update from Paragon is, they, they said they're, they're making progress on both fronts, which is the tax credit application and the fading west option. So with the tax credit application, the market study update is engaged and being performed. The application letter is due December first, and it was submitted December first and was submitted to DOLA literally last week, so it was due yesterday, submitted last week. So they're, they're, that's their first choice, and that's what they're hoping to get through. But fading west is also moving ahead, and I'm not gonna say anything that will compromise you in any way, Nancy. Okay, yeah, it's nothing that, they're just, they're still working through cost proposals and things and trying to determine if that's a viable option. They will be doing a tour in January of fading west, I think on January twentieth, and considering if that's an option, they want to see the factory and see a project in Buena Vista. I may or may not try to be a part of that, depending on discussions with, with everybody here. And right now, one of the issues that they're looking at trying to work through is the thirty percent requirement for storefronts and working with fading west to incorporate those. And they're right now bidding GCs and the Civil and working through some of those issues that. So that's sort of where they're at with those two different options. And they're kind of going full steam ahead with both of them, just to see which one will actually. They'll know in April if they get the Lytec, and if they get all the other pieces. And I've connected them to the El Paso Housing Board that has revolving funds and DOLA and CHAF and all of those other players. And so we've been having those kind of meetings as well. But it wasn't as intensive this month.
Any questions regarding Paragon? All right. We'll move on to El Colorado update.
Okay, so right now, they're just working through trying to renovate. The ground crew is doing a ton of work over there. And I did check, I did do a bunch of research on what they're doing as far as permitting goes on, on the request of Darlene. And what they're doing right now is they're literally filling the walls with an expandable foam that's not required or needed a permit. But what that does is it, it, it gets rid of the vacancies in the spaces where the rats and the mice and the, all the things are living, and it also stabilizes the walls pretty significantly. They're clearing out the backside, which also doesn't require, they're basically just cleaning and getting weeds out and fixing those types of things. And then they're renovating the interiors. They tried to rent out some of the units and then just got terrible reviews, and so they literally only have like one unit that's available for short-term rental. Everything else, they're trying to evict long-term people and work with them to, over the winter, to stage and phase everything. And Danielle was gonna be here, she would love to do a tour. She's pushing her trip into January because they're so behind on their renovations. And she would love to schedule a tour with the board and anyone else who's interested in January. And I will update you as soon as I know when they're doing that. And I do believe that their lease with, what is the shop called now? It's changed names. Budstar, Budstar is up at the end of, at the end of December. So they're looking into those, those options too. So that's the El Colorado update.
Okay. We'll move on to budget twenty twenty-six.
Right, and this should look almost identical to what you saw a month ago. I did increase the streetscape enhancement to eighty-one thousand per year direction. But I also got to looking at what the likely property tax rebate will be to Holiday Inn under our agreement, and had raised that a little bit from what we paid last year, which was eighty-two thousand, three twenty-four, to ninety thousand, just based on what I could see. The AV went up. So other than that, it should be virtually what you saw a month ago. And I have included the two resolutions, that's the state kind of insists we do, which is the budget approval and the appropriation of funds. Be happy to answer questions. We actually, since we don't certify a mill levy, unlike most districts who are, have to get something done by the fifteenth of December, we basically have till the end of January to actually submit and approve budget to the state. But, so we've got lots of time for signatures, but that's the budget.
Anne, do we need to approve the budget and then approve each resolution?
I would approve the budget and the two resolutions.
Together?
You could do it. I'll swoop, yeah.
Okay, great. And do we need to read it into the minutes?
Pardon?
Do we need to read it into the minutes, the resolution? Or can we just, can I just ask for a motion to approve the budget and both resolutions?
I think just ask for a motion.
Okay, great. So there I am asking. For a motion. To approve the twenty twenty-six budget and resolution.
Resolutions, yeah.
To appropriate sums of money.
And approve the budget.
And adopt the budget.
Adopt the budget, yes.
Yeah. And, yeah, exactly. That did go out. Looking for a motion.
Pardon?
Looking for a motion. Oh, thank you, Alan.
Good, yeah.
Gregory, motions. Is there a second? Thank you, Alan. Delwich? Is there any further questions, discussion? All in favor? None opposed? All right, motion carries. Great. Uh, let's see, executive director report.
All right, so I worked with Paragon and LaFawn on the facade, also with Colorado Lodge, collaborated with Crane again a little bit, did a bunch of work, meeting with streetscape and mobility improvements, all the administrative pieces that I do. Let's see what was special that I did this month. I, I did meet with the city on the bridge, but I've got that as a later, a later, a later line item, and I can, I can update you on that. And then also, the bike signage and safety is also a later item, so I'll just, I guess I can just go right into that. Okay, so with the, I, I also started looking at the facade improvement grant and worked with Sheldon to get his in, his didn't, he didn't have, I wanted to meet with Darlene first to make sure we had all the checks and balances before we approved another one, because I had everything from him except for approval by the actual owner of the building, even though he's painted everything. I have the photos, I have the receipts, I have everything. But I wanted to make sure we had all the other items for Sheldon first with Darlene. And that's literally, that was two thousand dollars for the grant, so it's not, it's not major. And it does look quite a bit better. It was like chipping, peeling, and now it's just clean. And he just did the same color. So that piece, let's see, with the, with the bike and mobility, I did a number of different meetings. I met with, with Corey Satella from the Parks and Mobility Board, and we did a bike ride around and just found the inconsistencies in the signage for part, and the, like, the pinch points for where it just doesn't feel safe. And he's working with the City of Colorado Springs because they're trying to develop a bike boulevard that when El Paso comes into the RV lot in Colorado Springs, it's not quite in Manitou, splitting that in two ways, so going down El Paso will be the, the fast bike boulevard on the backside. And then going down to, across the bridge and then under and on the bike path is kind of the more scenic route. So splitting those two and working with the City of Colorado Springs to put some signage that indicates that that's the bike pathway that continues the bike signage from Colorado Springs. So that's one piece. And then making the signage consistent, trying to figure that out, because it says biking, and then it says no parking, but it looks like no biking when you drive really quickly by it. So there's one that's consistent and one that's not, and then there's a series of signs that say no bike lane and then bike lane, like there's just a chunk under the bridge that's weird and inconsistent. So then I did a bike ride and meeting with the city engineer and with, with the Manitou city engineer and with the Parks and Mobility person, Felipe, and we rode the section of, from the Dillon up through town and tried to look at how it's linking into the URA. And we're going to do another, another endeavor to try to figure out the URA portion. So that leads me into the conversation about the Dillon Bridge and Mobility. After the budget meeting, we had Denise wanted to meet with me up at facilities by the graveyard, that's right above my house. And we met up there, and she was really, really hoping that we would spend all of our, you know, a big chunk of our funds in a bridge across to, from the Dillon Mobility Hub to Fields Park. And what I said after I'd already talked with Farley and a couple of other members is that our goal with the URA is to spend it on things that will increase the tax revenue within the URA, not to just deplete our funds on one bridge. And we may be willing to work with, like, the beautification or some art pieces or something like that. But that was a lengthy discussion around the bridge, and then that's what spurred the bike ride too. And so then the conversations went around the backside and getting the backside of the Dillon and talking about, with the city engineer, the issue of having a dog park back there is that the, the creek already has a substantial amount of E. coli in it. And so figuring out ways to clean up Fountain Creek and connect it with school programs and things like that as a stewardship piece was one conversation. And then the other conversation was how to get people back in that little nook behind the Dillon where there's often homeless people through a series of trails. And also, one idea was like climbing and also like just being open to other ideas. They weren't really that into a dog park, which I find, I, I was a bit disappointed by because of dog poop more, you know, E. coli coming into the creek, so. That was the full discussion there, and we're just working to try to re-stripe. They're already re-striping some things. They were very excited about the potential of the bridge gateway art piece. And working with that, they were also very excited about making it much more pedestrian and having more people on, and our conversation went around to, if we have forty-three units at Paragon, if El Colorado is updated, there will be more pedestrian traffic, and that will start to spur some of those things. And making sure that there's commuter bikes that are really safe, but then also making sure it's two lanes for commuters, but then also making it more appealing for people to actually walk and bike it, who aren't necessarily like, you know, trained biking professionals. So the other piece was a discussion on, a discussion on using some of the empty banner spots to promote parking at the Dillon, because people don't necessarily know that they park at the Dillon and can ride the cog. So something that was clever to point people into parking at the Dillon and riding the cog, and also the, something that was more about biking in those other spots instead of using them for, like, the Manitou Foundation or some of those other pieces. And then the other part of the conversation was, was around improving signage so that people know where bike trails are and where pedestrian walkways are, so that it's safer and more combined, yeah.
Elektra, I have a question. When we walk under the Adams Crossing, the bicycles sometimes zing by you at really, really, really fast. And we actually had a neighbor that had, she broke, they broke her leg, a bike hit her. Is there a slow down or watch out for pedestrians or some kind of sign we could put up?
Absolutely.
When they're going under the bridge, because they go really fast.
So we talked about two things. I will put that. So we talked about two things. I will put that on the list as, as to bring up in conversation with them because improving the signage is a big piece. But also splitting it so that there's like a dedicated, like just painting a stripe. So there's biking and walking, you know, so that people aren't overlapping.
Right.
You know.
Right.
I, yeah.
Good idea.
I believe that corridor is in Colorado Springs purview.
Yeah.
So we would, we could still ask, but it might take a while, but.
Yeah, and that corridor we talked about, I talked about with Corey Satella, and it's just like that little chunk under the bridge is super dangerous for a number of reasons. One, all the, all the material when it rains goes, just is right there. So people wipe out there all the time on bikes too. So if they're going fast, it's also like super dangerous for that reason. And also that's like the pinch point where it changes from Manitou to Colorado Springs. And it's like an unguarded sort of homeless person area that just doesn't feel safe too. So that's the other reason to direct people onto the bike path boulevard piece and across the upper portion of the bridge because that area is just not necessarily very safe either. And we did have that discussion too. Yeah.
I have a question. We've had a lot of discussion about the signage. And was there a discussion with, you talked to Denise and apparently some other people about making the signs? We, we don't want eight million signs. We don't want this go this way and it just gets confusing. Was there any discussion that you had about the consistency of signs and making them a little bit more artsy, if you will? We don't want, you know, these giant things that confuse everyone.
Yeah.
But we also need to include not only the splits, bike lanes, pedestrian lanes, but the bus routes and the parking situations. We probably need to really think that through before we start just slapping signs up.
Yes, so that discussion was with Felipe, who, who is the head of the Parks and Mobility Board, or, or the, not the board, but the actual department. And he was very amenable to making things consistent. And we had, we started the discussion on starting with up here, this portion before you get into the URA and then continuing into the Dillon. So I, I will continue to work with him. What they really need, what the City of Manitou needs is a, is like a signage plan. And right now they, there's not really one and everything is inconsistent. So I think even just highlighting the inconsistencies is starting to help things. And then also, part of that signage is painting those green biking stripes all the way through that, that intersection under the Highway twenty-four and bikes is just super dangerous and not, it doesn't, it's not clear which, where bikes or pedestrians should be. And so they're doing striping and signage there and they have a grant to pay for some of that. So that's started and I'm going to meet with, I'll meet with Felipe again and make sure that we're, you know, working with them on the signage plan. So that's, that's the goal there is trying to have some consistency because it's not consistent at all. Yeah. Yes. Now, the artsy part we haven't discussed, but I'll, I'll see if they can bring that branding in and I'm still aiming for like the Becker's Lane sign to be turned into something pretty, but. Exactly, exactly. So, yeah. Yeah, but.
Any further discussion? All right. Thank you, Elektra. You started into new business a little bit with the Sheldon Facade Grant. Do you have any more on that?
Yeah, so I got most everything from him. I got, I got sort of a partially filled out application and then I got, I didn't get pictures, so I went and tried to take some pictures, but then I didn't have the owner's signature on there. And so I wanted to make sure it was consistent before we went through the whole thing. So I wanted to sit with, sit down with Darlene. And Darlene and I met to talk about updating the grant process and just making it really clear. And she wants to work with me on that as well. And I guess I can go into the other pieces too, if that's okay with you, Darlene. Did you want to say anything about the grant process?
No, no, I, I'm really excited to move forward with Elektra. So we can bring you, okay, here's our check sheet and it's all good, so. Thank you, Elektra.
And then the other thing that, I'll, I'll just skip to the bottom and then go to the middle. So that, we also, Darlene and I met about creating an onboarding handbook that had kind of everything on it and made it really clear sort of what we, the ordinance is, and she's researching that piece. And then also the timelines, like I'm not clear on the timelines of legality of when we've got to get budgets in and all of those things. I'm learning from Ann and trying to like backtrack. So I think it would be helpful for just the whole overall situation to have an onboarding piece.
When I first got on the board, it was Dan Folk, I think, and he had a handbook. It was a notebook, which I still have that had all the history, the approval of the URA, the legislation, and I still use it. So I think those are very handy.
Could we borrow it?
Yeah.
We'll give it back.
Yeah, I'll bring it. Yeah.
That would be great. Yeah, Darlene, if Darlene and I can borrow it.
Look at it.
I know. I have it too. I just remembered that.
I think as Elektra found out, we operate under not the most current URA statute in the state. We operate under an older statute and you can't find it.
Yeah.
Online. We had to go to David to actually find it for us, and I have that in my notebook. So I think those are, it's all, it's really important to have kind of a guidebook where when you, even if you've been on for a number of years, you can look back and see, yeah.
And we talked about putting in some good projects that we've been involved with and, you know, I, I just think it'll be great. Thank you. Thank you.
And then that led into a conversation about the website and updating the website and having more, just having it more accessible so that you can actually find things. Like I got a big, I got basically from Jim, I got a flash drive with a whole bunch of stuff on it. And I've been going through it bit by bit, trying to organize, find the different pieces and the owners, and it's relatively organized, but it's not necessarily totally up to date with everything because it's been sort of a place where you just shelve everything for years. So that's what I got. And then I spoke with Carol too about updating the Facebook page and I'll get access so that I can update things. Yes, I haven't gone through that yet, but I'm going to do that. And then starting an Instagram page too. I don't know that we need other social media stuff. I think those two are the ones that are probably the most easy. Yeah. And then making it so that we can just post things really easily, whether it's Carol or I, just posting whenever. And, and just celebrating the URA and making people more aware of what we do, so.
Elektra, we might create a process for social media in which our business owners can submit information to you.
Yes.
And link to opportunities of whatever they're doing or events. And that we really promote our, our local businesses in our zone in particular.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. I, I've been taking pictures and videos as I drive through the lights at night and trying to, but then I, I was, you know, can't post them yet, but I will be able to at some point.
You mentioned that El Colorado had some negative press.
Well, so they started renting rooms out before they were ready.
You mentioned two or three.
Yeah, and so they just sort of like backed off on that. So they have one that is complete. And I think they're working through that. It's just been a mess.
Rented them, didn't care for them?
No, they rented some of the old rooms before they were ready because they needed the revenue and the old rooms there were, you know, I mean, if you're staying there and there's a snake and a rat, it's kind of not the most, or you're scratching the walls or whatever. Yeah.
As we move forward, since our website is linked to the city's website.
Yeah.
I think we need to make sure that we're above board and not in conflict with anything with the city.
Oh, absolutely.
It does.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know that we can update the city, the website, because what I've had to do in the past, just update my name from Jim's is to submit it to the city.
Good, perfect.
So they actually update it all.
Great.
That's sort of been the block too, which is why I haven't launched into rebuilding the whole thing, which is something I would totally do.
Part of the reason we ended up doing that was for the accessibility piece.
Right.
We wanted to make sure our website was compliant.
Yeah. So. We can also put, we can also put links to our social media on that page so they can see like, you know, have the things that are up, upcoming and going on. So you can see that.
Do we have a prospect of a QR code?
Oh, no, that's a great idea. Okay, that's a really easy thing to do. I can do that with Canva.
Yep.
Yeah, that's super easy to do, yeah.
You know, because I think.
Absolutely.
Because I think some of these things we need to start appealing to younger folks.
Absolutely.
Do these things all day long and try to encourage them to come and visit and shop with us and eat with us and party with us, right? All those things. Maybe that will help some of these projects along so we can stimulate some activity in our zone.
Let's see, moving on to city council liaison report.
Thank you. Couple things. Tonight we are reviewing or approving the fee schedule, which the only changes are increase in rates for renting Memorial Hall and increasing rates in accordance with the most recent rate study for water and sewer rates. So always popular to increase rates, but as Farley is dying over there. And also we're doing the first reading for the budget, first hearing tonight for the budget. And then the second reading will be on December eleventh, which is a Thursday. Because staff couldn't turn around the first hearing in time. It's next week and they would have to have it done by tomorrow to get it in on time. So it's the eleventh, and I don't know if it's going to be at noon or at six or what time it's going to be on the eleventh, so that'll probably be decided tonight. And after our twenty-second, our budget workshop a couple of weeks ago, or last week, I guess, when was it? Last week? Recently, the twenty-second. There were no changes to the URA budget, no recommended changes to the URA budget. So thank you for Farley and Ann and Elektra for coming and to oversee that. And the overall budget, the biggest change we made that, on that Saturday was making a special line for fire mitigation and transferring the six hundred ninety thousand that we would have got, we would have refunded to the Cog Railway in accordance with our agreement with them, and instead we put it into a special line for fire mitigation. So that will be interesting to see how that all plays out. And lastly, the, well, we're also doing the second reading on ADUs tonight. The main thing we did there was so far is no short-term rentals. ADUs cannot be used for short-term rentals. And I don't know if Alan, you want to make any more comments? I mean, there's a couple other issues that we're going to be discussing tonight, but fronted or.
Yeah, I think the main thing was the position of if the ADU can be in front of the
Right.
front plane of the house. And I think
Yeah, yeah.
That the commission, it was divided vote, but supported allowing that.
Okay. Thanks. And lastly, Metro District, the city and the Metro District went to court a couple of weeks ago on some, on the dissolution plan. Both the city had to present a dissolution plan and the Metro District had to submit its dissolution plan. And the, the court decided on the city's dissolution plan. It's the only one that was within legal constraints of, or the legal standards for a dissolution plan. So the court on every question that was raised that day, and it was all very tedious legal questions, the court decided in favor of the city. So there will be a March third election to determine the future of the Metro District and the, and that only applies to the people who are in the Metro District, which is basically like Manitou Avenue and Canyon Avenue and not much else. So, but that, that will be very interesting to see how that resolves. So that's all I have unless anyone has any questions for me.
Nancy, is the question just should the district be dissolved?
No, the question is, does the city want to adopt, or does the Metro District, the, the voters within the Metro District want to vote to adopt the city's dissolution plan, which is basically a plan for the future of parking in the, in the downtown area? Or not? And if they vote no, then it will just remain as it currently is.
Okay.
With the Metro District.
Does it dictate who gets, I assume the city gets ownership
Yeah.
of the metro assets, right?
Yeah. I'm, you know, and I'm sure that there was more room for appeals and so on, but that's where we are at this point.
Yeah.
And the city's position is, is that we can just do it a lot more efficiently and that the, the Metro District has basically served its purpose to date and it's just time to get, do something different.
Do you know how many electors there are?
It's like a hundred and eighty-something, I think. There, there aren't that many. Yeah.
Well, that's more than I would have guessed.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay.
And I, don't quote me on that.
Okay.
But something like that.
Nancy, I just had a general question. And maybe I've been oblivious. I know there's been work along the avenue, but what was the, what was the project plan for these tree?
Bump outs?
Yes, because you've eroded parking by building those.
Yeah, there just continues to be very strong because they took out some trees along the Creek Walk path and the fort, the fourth project of the Creek Walk. And that was just to keep some greenery, shade, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sure that there were some other reasons as well, which I don't recall, but I know that there was a strong feeling on council not to just have this barren Creek Walk.
Do you know how much was expended in the budget for those?
No. I don't, I, you know, we've had the, the cut sheet on that, but I don't recall what it was.
Well, I just, my, you know, and this is after the fact, but I just, I mean, I understand the motivation. But I think it's eroded parking and I think it'll create a safety hazard.
There was one already, of course, down in that lane, but part of it was, I mean, I'm sure part of it is just the, to make the entry into the city more attractive was certainly part of it. And I know there's just been controversy over the fence. Some people don't like the fence. I think the fence looks great, but that's me. It's an aesthetic thing. So, and I don't know how many, I don't, I don't know how many parking spaces were lost. I don't think that many, but I, again, I couldn't tell you for sure. So there were trade-offs. There's always trade-offs.
On the bike tour that I did with the engine, city engineer and the parking manager, or the head of the Parks and Mobility, oh, they talked about those plots being specifically for pollinators as well.
Okay.
So that was one thought is to increase the pollinator city piece too.
Yeah, the environmental folks, I think, I think appropriately have, in most cases, have a very strong voice or council speaks very strongly in favor of environmental, green tree canopy, et cetera, et cetera, so.
So Elektra, if the pollinators can grow in those spaces and the city will maintain those?
Yeah.
I, I'm not clear on that piece, but.
My point of that is then they should take care of our twelve planters in our zone.
Yeah. I don't know if they're doing that or they're looking for volunteers. Yeah.
To the record.
Yeah.
That, that should be recommended.
Yeah, they, and I, I don't know what the discussion is. I know that they had mentioned possibly increasing volunteers, which also then puts the burden more on the, you know, citizens too. So who knows? I don't know.
And just Barbara, last summer early, when the, I had asked Denise about the city maintaining the planters and I did get pushed back, so.
Well, and I, the only thing I would, I think physically we can clean up and, and observe the, it's just difficult to haul water up and down the street, even to those, I mean, that's a lot of effort, either to bring water from your house. I don't know, I never asked that motel. I mean, that's a pain too, to impose upon a business owner to walk up to their building and turn on their spigot at the side of the building. And I just, I just think it ought to be included in some watering plan for the city in, at large, so.
I will, I will push for that too because I know exactly what a pain it is to get the water there. And we did try to get some of that and they said you could fill it at the pool, which doesn't make it any easier. You may as well just fill it at your house. Right? It's not really like the water because there's not that much.
Those big trucks.
Yeah.
Carry water and they
Yeah.
Just, it doesn't take long to move along. It's just the hauling the water.
Yeah.
Issue. It's not that we're adverse to taking care of them.
I'll, I'd propose that before spring occurs sometime in maybe February or March, I'll put in a little bit of a pollinator plan for the URA. That goes along with some of the grant pieces that I was looking at from the butterfly. That goes along with some of the grant pieces that I was looking at from the butterfly pavilion and some of those other pieces.
Um, let's see, any other business aside from pollinators?
I would just, I've looked at this the last couple of months, but there's at least three or four of us that our terms expire next year. So officially we would go off the board. So however, we're acting on that at the bottom of the page. Uh, in dealing with the city for whether we want to continue, they want us to continue, or who they're going to name in our place next year.
Yeah.
We need, we need some advance on that.
Well, how is it that I've been on this board for twenty solid years?
Somebody has.
Twenty.
Reappoint you in some manner.
Oh, so you can be reappointed.
Yeah, I don't know that there's term limits.
You have to go off.
No, I'm saying some action needs to officially be taken about our status.
Then, as far as I'm concerned.
Is the board at, uh, I mean, the.
The mayor.
Yes, the mayor appoints, yeah. Okay.
Approves us. I just.
If it's done properly.
I just bring that forward that however.
Yeah.
Officially enumerated and or asked to continue or not continue. I mean, we're at the pleasure of the mayor. Or the, and or the new mayor. So that just needs to be brought up.
I will take that up with the, the new mayor to just to see where we are.
The way we've done it in the past is, um, for the other boards and commissions, the city clerk lets the chair know that someone's term is ending and they also let that person, and they can request to be reappointed. The U R A is a slightly different beast, but I think, Anne, didn't you do that? Didn't you request to stay on?
And Farley wrote a letter. I think, again, it, this is just a really busy time.
Yeah.
I just don't think John's gotten to it. And it, it may lapse, it may just fall into Natalie's.
Yeah. Yeah, generally, if, in the, at least on the, the boards I've been on, there's the implicit continuation eh, in your position after the term is up unless someone says no or something. You know, that's happened several times with the planning commission where people have just not got around to it. And then it didn't fit on an agenda, but people.
So, so your comment or the point is there are no term limits in this city?
That's correct.
For anything other than city council and.
Correct.
By, by statute. Again, we're controlled by state statute.
Right. I thought we had term limits.
But it, which is unlike anything else on any city board or commission. But yes, there is a five-year term and we had gotten clear direction from David Neville when John was up. That until you are replaced, you continue, even if your term has expired.
Nobody ever wanted to replace you, I guess. So that's kind of the situation.
That's the only point I'm bringing forward officially, that it ought to be addressed, because two of us come off in February.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
That's my point.
Yeah, it should be addressed. Right.
Yeah, well, I, I hope everybody will choose to stay on. So send me a letter next year. I hope, I hope, I hope we stick with a good board, so.
Yeah, this has been a great board. I've really appreciated this year. It's been.
And when I did come on this board twenty years ago, the consult, I'm not lying, it was twenty, twenty, two thousand six. It was two thousand, November of two thousand five and then official, yeah. Um, but the consultants that, that, um, helped us to form the U R A said that they prefer to have long-term, um, commissioners on this type of board for U R As. That they want them to be lifers basically, because you're seeing the entire plan through from beginning to end. So I guess that's why I'm still here. Anyway, uh, let's see, so if there's no other business, I believe.
Oh, I'd just say that having some consistency, like even just, we didn't even know about the notebooks until just now. Really fantastic. And then hopefully Darlene and I can archive that. Me too, I saw her eyes light up. So having some of those so that we can roll it over and that, that sort of like knowledge of what has occurred is really important too.
And, and just for clarification, what is the life expiration of the U R A?
And again, David, David will tell you every time I say we're gone in, what is it, twenty-five years, so it'll be thirty-one. And he says, no, you quit getting incremental tax revenue.
Right.
But the body itself does not expire. He's just crystal clear on that. Every time I say, well, we're, we're done in thirty-one, it's like, no.
It would become inactive without funding.
We wouldn't have any money, yes. It would be a limited purpose, but we would still exist apparently.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think the point of that is that you've improved an area and then you move on to another area, hopefully. That's the intent anyway. Yeah.
All right, are you all ready to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Anne. Second, and I'm sure we have one. Thank you, Alan. Uh, everybody have a great holiday. Thank you all so much. Yeah. See you in January.